Welcome to our November fourteenth regularly scheduled board work session. We do have two individuals signed up for our public agenda. I'll call you in the order that your name appears. Microphone is over here. Each have five minutes. We have Ms. Teresa Alameen and Ms. Sadia Abdullah. Ms. Alameen, that's not here. Ms. Abdullah. Microphone is over here. While you're coming, I'll read the disclaimer. All official meetings of the Board of Education shall be open to the public and to the press. However, the Board may not meet, may meet an executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the Board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The Board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or the superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address the Board, which would be through the superintendent's office, and emailing or calling Ms. Jones. Thank you very much. Go ahead, ma'am.
Do I have to do anything to make it turn on? Or it's on?
It's on.
Perfect. So first of all, thank you so much for having me today. As most of you may know, on the Board, I am Sadia Abdullah, a former employee of Muskogee County Schools, and I won't go running down all of my experience in education. But the big thing is, I am an advocate for children, not just my own child or my own children, but I'm an advocate for all children. And so when I was at the Board meeting last week, and we were talking about literacy, and we saw the numbers, of course, math was much worse than than literacy, but you can only eat one meal at a time, so we'll eat the meal of literacy first. When we were talking about literacy and I saw those numbers, my greatest concern is that when our children can't read and write on grade level, we set them up for failure. Now, we can say that this is attributed to COVID, however, we had this problem before there was a COVID. So this is not just a COVID problem. COVID did exacerbate the problem, so we won't deny that. It did. However, this is not a COVID problem. So, one of the things that we have to do when we look at a district, I know one of the things that was said was that it's a three-legged stool. And if one leg of the stool does not do their part, then we can't blame the school district. And I took that to mean the parents, because if you have the community as a leg, we have the school district as a leg, the third leg, obviously, is the parents, of course, of which I am one. Now, in my case, I'm in a position to be able to say, this is not working for my child, and I'm pulling my child out, which is what I did this year. And that broke my heart, because my oldest daughter is a product of public schools, just like I am a product of public schools, just like my husband was a product of public schools. And so it really broke my heart to have to pull my son out of Muskogee County Schools to send him to Brookstone to try to get him the education that he needs. One, because I had set him ahead of his peers. He was that kid that got lucky and was able to stay home with me for his kindergarten year. He was also that kid that got lucky and was able to stay home with me when his big sister had to get a pacemaker and I homeschooled her. So I put him ahead of his peers. He went to kindergarten, and I kept saying, hey, I mean, first grade, because kindergarten, he was with me. The kindergarten teacher really worked with me. I'm like, hey, he's already done this, we need to push him ahead. So she worked with me. The first grade teacher, by the second semester, she tried to work a little bit with him to meet his needs. Second grade, I could not, I just could not go through a whole nother year, so he's now at Brookstone. So I look at all the other kids in the district, which was one of the reasons I did not want to pull my child out, because I want to make sure that I can advocate for all children. And when yours is sitting right there, it really makes you raise your voice a lot louder. You cannot fix what is happening with our literacy with a sixty-nine-page document, or however many pages that document was. That's not where the problem lies. The problem lies in the research that is behind how children learn how to read. Unfortunately, in this district, we really rely on a lot of programs to solve this problem, instead of building up our teachers who should be solving this problem. We're not taught, I don't know if you know this, when we go to school to become teachers, we're not given explicit instruction on how to teach kids how to read. And for those of us who just cannot remember how they learned how to read, it's really scary to be responsible for teaching someone else's child how to read. That was me when I was a first-grade teacher. Thankfully, my principal gave me a mentor who could teach me to teach children how to read. So, it's not going to happen with these leveled readers, and if we have people in higher levels that are choosing curriculums that knows the research, we won't keep buying faulty research or faulty curriculum, I'm sorry. It's not going to happen with those leveled readers. It's not going to happen with Lexia. It's not going to happen with all these technologies that we keep trying to throw at the problem. You have to teach your teachers how to effectively and systemically teach reading, and that's what we're not doing. Most of those leveled readers are sitting on a shelf still in their plastic. So even if they could work, they won't work, because we can't give teachers a curriculum without the training that they need before that curriculum ever touches their hands, because now they've already built up bad habits, when we try to go back and build the plane, quote-unquote, as they fly it. So in my closing words, as we look at this three-legged stool, I want you to reimagine what that three-legged stool is. One leg is going to be the district. The second leg is going to be those folks at your schools, your teachers and your administrators. That third leg is the community. Your parents and the children are the seat of that stool. And if one of those legs fail, we fail our children and we fail those families, not the other way around. So, thank you.
Thank you so very much. All right, still don't see Ms. Alameen. We do have presentations. We have Community Schools United Impact Report. Mr. Bell?
Good evening. Board members, Dr. Lewis, Madam Chair. Before we get started with this presentation, I want to take a moment to thank each and every one of you on the Board, because a year ago, you approved ESSER funding for us to start the Community Schools United Strategy at Brewer and Martin Luther King Junior Elementary, and we thank you for that. Tonight, the purpose of this presentation is to talk about the impact that that program is having. How many of you remember Dr. Lewis's work with Schools Cannot Do It Alone? This was true, a lot of great work was done with that, that book. That was true, what, nine, ten years ago? It's certainly true, fast forward to today, trying to come out of this pandemic, schools cannot do it alone. You know, the success of our community is tied to our schools. I don't think anybody in here will dispute that. We're fortunate to have a partner like United Way. If you're here from the United Way, Community Schools United, stand up. Thank you. We're so fortunate for the vision of Mr. Ben Moser, who brought this strategy to our community. The Community Schools United did not exist in Columbus prior to the last two years, and we're very fortunate. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the experts.
Kids in our community need a great start in life, and we can provide that through Community Schools United by working with partners within that school environment. We have outstanding school systems and leaders within the Chattahoochee Valley, and our job through Community Schools United is to take some of the non-academic items off the plate of teachers and administrators across our region, and provide them with the support they need in the school to handle some of the things that come up on a daily basis, the hygiene needs, the food needs, the social-emotional needs of students, especially those living in intergenerational poverty in our community. We're extremely excited about the future of our United Way, having a greater impact on the lives of students and families through our Community Schools United Strategy.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Vice President of Community Schools United, Ms. Pam Romero.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Matt, Mr. Bell, for the introduction, and thank you, Dr. Lewis, and Board, for the opportunity to work with the district to implement Community Schools' strategy in Dorothy Height, MLK, and Brewer Elementary Schools. Collaborative leadership and practices is such a key component to the work that we do. In fact, it's one of the four pillars of the Community Schools' national model. So with that, I want to start by acknowledging our team, our Community Schools team in the room. We have Ms. Adams, Principal of Dorothy Height Elementary School, along with the Community School Coordinator, Ms. Brittany Blackman. Let's see, we have Ms. Bentley Brown from MLK, along with Mr. Jarvis Hamilton, the Community School Coordinator, and Ms. Woodall from Brewer Elementary School. And unfortunately, our coordinator for Brewer couldn't be here tonight, Ms. Nishada Egboisi. Also want to acknowledge our United Way team, Mr. Ben Moser, who's our president and CEO, as well as Ms. Jennifer St. John, who is our Chief of Impact. So I'd like to share this infographic in front of you, which depicts our theory of change for Community Schools United. Our strategy focuses on the whole child by providing academic support, social-emotional learning, health and wellness, family and community engagement, and a safe supportive climate. This roadmap entails a variety of pipeline services that we offer in the school and around the school community, and they represent programs, services, and resources that can be bucketed into the four pillars of the National Community Schools' model, which are integrated student supports, expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities, active parent and community engagement, and collaborative leadership and practices, with the end of the roadmap, as you see the destination, is that students and families thrive. So here's a snapshot of our impact numbers among the three schools. I believe you guys have the full impact report in front of you that has more details, but I did want to highlight a few points here. So at three, at all three sites, we've been able to build out resource rooms that include clothing and uniform closets, school supplies, a food pantry, a social-emotional learning lending library, and other items such as hygiene and laundry products. We've also been able to grow the food assistance program known as Buddy Packs by over two-hundred percent, and start a farm-to-school program in mobile market in partnership with the food mill. Please join our monthly mobile market every first Wednesday at Brewer Elementary School. Our next one is December seventh, so you guys are more than welcome to come out from two to four P.M. Another great partnership has been the Boys and Girls Club. In years past, Brewer and MLK offered after-school programming to thirty students in grades three through five in partnership with Columbus State University's EYC program. We have since been able to enhance the after-school space by partnering with Boys and Girls Club to add an additional forty slots per school, open to the entire school, grades K through five, at no cost to the families. During the summer, we also worked closely with the entire district to coordinate over forty partners to provide enrichment opportunities through the summer learning experience. And last, I want to highlight is the social-emotional learning interventions that our coordinators have truly embraced with not only the students, but also the parents and the school staff. These interventions have shown to decrease the number of out-of-school suspensions and increase the average daily attendance. We're able to uncover the root causes of some disruptive behaviors and address challenges that students face outside of the classroom that ultimately impact their performance within the classroom. And this is just a different visual of some of the referrals that we, that we get. As you can see, they're very different. And I think it's important to note that these schools are in a continuous zone and very close to one another, yet their needs present very differently. So health, social, and housing being the top three. And one thing that's important to note is also that if you have seen one community school, you have seen one community school. Every school is unique, and our strategy pivots to meet the emerging needs of each school. And now that I've covered some of the high-level impact numbers, I do want to call up Ms. Bentley Brown from MLK Elementary School to give you a different perspective through the lens of a community school principal.
Well, good afternoon, Dr. Lewis and Board members. Thank you for allowing Community Schools United to join and assist us with the work that we're doing. And like Mr. Bell said earlier, schools can't do it alone, and in this year, have been, I knew I was going to do it, having Mr. Jarvis to support us has been an asset to our school, because our students and families have so many issues that we would never imagine. And he has assisted us with things such as the walking school bus on National Walk to School Day, because some of our parents, in the morning, they would bring their kids because it was dark, and so they wanted to make sure they made it safely to school. And in the afternoon, they would walk home, but it was a group of them walking together. So when Mr. Jarvis initiated the walking school bus, parents were so excited, and for some of them, they were bringing their kids to school, and they saw us walking, and they felt comfortable opening their car door and allowing their kids to walk to school with us. So Mr. Jarvis organized that, and he had sixteen community volunteers who came and assisted. And those are the small things that make a tremendous impact for our students and our community, our school community. And so since Mr. Jarvis has joined our team, he has assisted with greeting the parents and the students in the morning, the car rider line, and in the afternoon. And during those times, he has opportunities to see, to speak to parents and just see needs that they may have by not even them telling you, but you can notice, you see things when they're in their cars. And just having those conversations and establishing those relationships have helped us out. And Mr. Jarvis is our coordinator for our weekly attendance meeting, because attendance is an issue, and we know that our students are in elementary schools, so they cannot get themselves to school and up on time. So that is a parent issue. So we have an attendance committee that Mr. Jarvis is spearheading, and we meet every Monday, and we're talking about the needs. And we have different faculty members that are assigned to call different parents on grade levels. And we have the parents that come in along with the school social worker, and when they come in, they're always telling us an issue, something that they are facing, a challenge. And I can truly say that United Way has really helped us eliminate barriers for our families, because when they walk in and we're having the conversation, we're from MLK Elementary School to give you a different perspective through the lens of a community school principal.
Well, good afternoon, Dr. Lewis and Board members. Thank you for allowing Community Schools United to join and assist us with the work that we're doing. And like Mr. Bell said earlier, schools can't do it alone. And in this year, having having Mr. Jarvis to support us has been an asset to our school because our students and families have so many issues that we would never imagine. And he has assisted us with things such as the walking school bus on National Walk to School Day because some of our parents, in the morning, they would bring their kids because it was dark. And so they wanted to make sure they made it safely to school. And in the afternoon, they would walk home, but it was a group of them walking together. So when Mr. Jarvis initiated the walking school bus, parents were so excited. And for some of them, they were bringing their kids to school, and they saw us walking. And they felt comfortable opening their car door and allowing their kids to walk to school with us. So Mr. Jarvis organized that. And he had 16 community volunteers who came and assisted. And those are the small things that make a tremendous impact for our students and our community, our school community. And so since Mr. Jarvis has joined our team, he has assisted with greeting the parents and the students in the morning, the car rider line, and in the afternoon. And during those times, he has opportunities to speak to parents and just see needs that they may have by not even them telling you, but you can notice. You see things when they're in their cars. And just having those conversations and establishing those relationships have helped us out. And Mr. Jarvis is our coordinator for our weekly attendance meeting because attendance is an issue. And we know that our students are in elementary schools, so they cannot get themselves to school and up on time. So that is a parent issue. So we have an attendance committee that Mr. Jarvis is spearheading. And we meet every Monday. And we're talking about the needs. And we have different faculty members that are assigned to call different parents on grade levels. And we have the parents that come in along with the school social worker. And when they come in, they're always telling us an issue, something that they are facing, a challenge. And I can truly say that United Way has really helped us eliminate barriers for our families. Because when they walk in and we're having the conversation, we're finding out things that we never knew were happening. And with that, Mr. Jarvis has a form, and the parents will fill it out. And he's able to get them the support that they need. And it is like instant. So we have a parent coordinator at our school, but United Way just has resources that honestly, I never knew were out there. But he's right there, and he's having those conversations. And the parents, it's almost like an aha moment. And it's like, honestly, I remember when Mr. Ben Moser came to MLK to meet me when I first became principal. And he asked us what did we need? And we were talking, and I can truly say he did everything and more than I thought that he would do. And with that, he's helping us eliminate those barriers and provide those resources for those families. And the parents will come in, and we'll ask them, well, what do you need? What can we do to assist you? And they'll tell us some things. And sometimes, they don't think that we can help. They're like, well, this is things that are out of your control. I need to pay my utility bill, or I'm almost about to get kicked out. And Mr. Jarvis is like, we have a resource for that. And once they fill out those forms, he doesn't stop calling. So it's not like you fill out a form, and then that's the end of it. He reaches out, and he connects with the families, and he follows up with them. And we have some students that are in McKinney-Bento. And so they're living in hotels at this time. And when he finds that out, he is automatically, and now that he has access to Infinite Campus, he's able to get in there, figure out where the families are living, call them, and make sure they have the support that they need. We also have a family, actually, that just had a situation, and they were moving outside of our zone, but they're McKinney-Bento. And he made sure that they had the utilities on at the house. So it's just so many things that he's doing, and he's doing it through United Way. And honestly, that was one of the best things that has ever happened to us at MLK. So we truly appreciate it. It's making a difference. And I would just say that generational poverty doesn't happen overnight, and we can't fix it overnight. But what United Way is doing through community and schools is helping us, and it's making a difference. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of our MLK family, our school family in our community, because it is making a difference. And I know that in three to five years, we'll see the impact. But I just want to say thank you.
I just would like to say thank you as well for the investment that you've made. It's an amazing place, the Chattahoochee Valley and Columbus. And we're just so fortunate to be able to do this work every day. And we can do that because of the investments that you make. So Dr. Lewis, School Board, the investments of time and treasure and talent. Mr. Bell has been just an absolutely amazing Region Chief for us to work with. Our Principals, Principal Adams, Principal Bentley Brown, and Principal Woodall, they make it happen along with our coordinators and our staff on a daily basis. But you guys make it happen through the investment that you make in United Way. So a heartfelt thank you from me and from our entire organization. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
I was just going to simply say the investment that was made this year, that you will see an agenda item later on. We wanted to bring this impact report for you because there's another agenda item later in the agenda to continue the investment in this community, these school communities of Baker, Brewer, and Dorothy Height. And just want to thank the Principals for coming out this evening. Mr. Jarvis, thank you. I mean, the whole idea of that walking bus ride, that went-to-school bus, that's amazing. And for some of our children, our youngest children, walking those streets, as we all know from recent situations, can be perilous for our children. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Jarvis not too long ago about that whole event that he was planning. And I just really appreciate your commitment to ensuring the safety and welfare of our children or families. Mr. Bell, thank you for your leadership in this area. And I want to thank the Board also for your investment in this programming. We feel like this is an investment that can lead to a national grant that would then fund us going forward. And we feel really good about this. But regardless of what happens with that, this is a great investment. And with the Esra dollars, that's exactly what they're intended to do.
I just wanted to also say thank you. I think this is great. But I would like you to add to your team our community liaison person that we have in-house because we have an entire hygiene closet dedicated for all of our students in the Muskogee County School District. And so that's going to be, when you're talking about the whole child, that's going to be a vital person, that is Ms. Florine Dawkins for our community liaison.
I just wanted to say thank you, too. As you've said, I've always been amazed at the generosity of Muskogee County, Chattahoochee Valley. I'm not originally from here, so I say that as someone who has lived other places. But I think what y'all are doing is significant because it's providing that bridge. Because often, there are resources. But as it was mentioned, too, often, the child is not a child is greatly affected by things beyond their means. And now y'all have a chance to see the impact it's having on the child, to then work with the parents to help alleviate those concerns. And I think this is a wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Lewis for bringing the update because it's very important for us to know what's going on. You know, we started this program a year or two ago, but when you bring this impact, I mean, this update, and we actually can hear the impact of the program and what we are actually getting and how it impacts children. As that Principal said earlier, Brewer's Principal, that kids can't dress themselves as she spoke to the importance of community involvement and how we have to get our kids here because kids can't learn if they're not at school. And then we have our community seeing that need and making sure that they get there, walking them to school, participating. Everybody's involved here. Everybody's part of us, doing their part on the leg. So I'm just so happy that you did do this, Dr. Lewis. It was important for us to see this. And we thank you for what y'all do for our community.
Thank you.
Hi, I just want to say thank you. This is a wonderful, wonderful program. And to Mr. Jarvis, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for being a champion for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we're going to go into our you coming up for the report. Okay, into our education reports. Ms. Buckner, get your mic.
Okay, we are ready, ready? Our first item is the Teacher Academy Preparation Pedagogy Update.
Good evening. On behalf of Division of Teaching and Learning and Professional Development, I'm Angie Jacobson, MCSD Georgia TAP Administrator. Georgia TAP is the Georgia Teacher Academy for Preparation and Pedagogy. And earlier this year, Dr. Lewis and Mr. Seifert asked that we provide the Board with an update as this is our fifth year in existence. So for those who are not familiar with Georgia TAP, it is a non-traditional teacher certification program. And anyone who has a bachelor's degree may apply. And then we'll talk about the other admission requirements in a few minutes. We were approved by the PSC in July of 2018 as an education preparation provider. So basically, it's a mini-college of education. The program lasts 18 to 36 months for a candidate. It depends on the certification that they're seeking. It is performance-based and job embedded. All candidates serve as a full-time teacher in the classroom. Now, these are people who are transferring, in most cases, from another career. So what I'd like you to remember as we go through the data is these are people who are coming from DFACs, social work, police force, TSIS. And they have very minimal training, and they start full-time as a teacher in a classroom in Muskogee. So for certification, candidates are issued a provisional certification with the PSC. And then, once they complete our program, they earn an induction certification. That means that they are within their first five years of teaching in the state of Georgia. We do have an advisory board that is a cross-functional team of MCSD personnel and a CSU representative, and that consists of approximately 20 members. So I'm very proud to say that Muskogee is one of six school systems in the state of Georgia that has their own Georgia TAP program. All of the other Georgia TAP programs in the state are within RISUS. So the other school districts that have programs are Gwinnett, Forsyth, DeKalb, Clayton, and Savannah-Chatham. So we are the only school system Georgia TAP program southwest of the metro area. When our program came into existence, it was decided that we would serve high-need areas and high-need schools. So we serve predominantly Title I schools. And our high-need areas are general elementary education, which we just added this year, Core Content 6 through 12, ESOL, for which we'll have our first candidate in the mid-year cohort coming up, music, Spanish, Special Education General Curriculum, and Visual Arts. And the schools you can see there that are listed, we do review those with HR for each upcoming cohort for any potential changes. So in order to be admitted to Georgia TAP for minimum requirements, per the PSC, they do have to have a bachelor's degree. They have to complete educator ethics. They have to pass the content Gaze unless it's for special education. And they do have to have a Principal's Recommendation for Hire. In order to be in Georgia TAP, they have to work full-time as a classroom teacher. And in our case, in order to be on a provisional status, they have to maintain satisfactory employment with the district. Now, you'll notice in the chart that there's a change that occurred in July 2022. So prior to July 2022, the PSC required the Program Admissions Assessment or Qualifying Exemption. That meant that they had to pass reading, math, and writing at least for a sophomore high school level. That was eliminated in July 2022 as removing a potential barrier for people to enter the teaching profession. And they also eliminated the minimum GPA. So our GPA is a 2.7 preferred, but we have admitted candidates with a lower GPA. So in regards to the training that our
I just want to interrupt. I apologize. So what you're saying is those are the minimum requirements, and we still have our own threshold, right?
These are the minimum requirements. And any candidate who meets the minimum requirements is not guaranteed admission into the program. And I'll explain that.
I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's not okay, now, who made that change? We did, or did we do it in concert with the professional standards?
We're following the professional standards.
The state did that as an answer to this shortage and during whatever we've been going through. And so the point is, that may be the minimum requirement, but we still have our you know, we're still seeking the highest qualified candidate.
We do have to maintain 3.0 GPA preferably for each cohort as part of.
So I'm going to put this square on the superintendent's shoulders because the last item on there is that the superintendent has to make a recommendation. And I'm just assuming that it was Muskogee Kim. We're not going to take somebody that has a 2.5 GPA and can't pass minimum standard tests.
So it is the Principal's Recommendation for Hire. Yes, ma'am. And although they don't have to take the test, but I thoroughly examine candidates' application, which does require writing samples within that application of their letter of interest. I also have multiple emails within candidates so I can see how they write as well. And then, we also have an interview process, which I'll show you in just a moment.
I'm sorry, my light doesn't work. So my chair's a little handicapped. Let me So I guess my question is that if these are the admission requirements set up by the state, and this is the minimum, and we do not we hire somebody that meets the or we don't hire somebody that meets the minimum but doesn't pass muster with the county, with you and the Principals, are we opening ourselves to liability there?
No, ma'am, because we have justification for the reason why we did not hire them.
But if the justification is that they didn't have a GPA
I'm telling you, that's what I'm saying, isn't it?
Or they can't pass a test, or we don't even give a test.
They're probably going to select the best qualified and the best-fit person usually.
Just because they apply doesn't mean we have to.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So, once a candidate is admitted into the program, they do have introductory training. It's the two weeks of Essentials of Teaching. That is at least 80 hours of rigorous training. I call it the boot camp of teaching. In other words, for those people who are coming in from another career, what do I need to know to be successful in the classroom until I see my mentors and trainers again for a Saturday seminar? It's introducing the basics, the mindset and dispositions of an effective teacher, classroom management, ethics, professionalism, et cetera. They are required to attend Muskogee's New Teacher Orientation. And then, if there's an extended conference regarding Empower for Best Practices, they do attend that as well. And in order to introduce them to our learning management system, they are all required to complete Growing with Canvas.
Is there do they have an are they allowed or have an opportunity to retake that Gaze test? Or how are we going through that if they failed? Do we give them? Is there a number?
So if they do not pass the Gaze for admissions, the PSC or Testing ETS requires that they have a minimum of 30 days prior to the next test administration. So we do have, on occasion, candidates who may have not made it into admission for one cohort, but they have taken the test, and then they were admitted into a future cohort. It depends on the timing of that test, of when they take it for cohort application. If we're talking about the content Gaze.
In other words, so if I don't pass it in math, but I do in ELA, I go in under ELA?
So we're confusing two things. So there's the Program Admissions Assessment, which used to be required, So there's the Program Admissions Assessment, which used to be required, that was reading, writing, and math. That was eliminated in July 2022. However, candidates have to pass a content Gaze. So if you were going to teach high school social studies, then you have to pass the pertinent social studies Gaze to teach six through 12. So when I say they have to have the minimum of 30 days to retake a test, then that's what we're referencing in the content Gaze.
But when you were speaking about you don't pass the test in one area, but some future cohort, where you explain that, then maybe that's what messed me up.
That's okay. So if you're going to apply to be a social studies teacher, and you didn't pass the Gaze the first time, to be admitted into the upcoming cohort. So in this case, let's just say, for example, the one we're about to begin in December, you didn't pass it. You don't have enough time to take it to be admitted into that cohort, to retake it. Okay? So our application will open again in the spring for the summer cohort, and you can reapply once you pass that test.
Take it in February, I'll be ready for the next cohort, the next group that comes through.
Yes, ma'am.
If I ever pass the score. Got you. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And by the way, I hope this is not distracting you, but we tend to disrupt.
Oh, no, ma'am. That's fine. That's fine. I'm happy to answer questions. So once we're in the program, we've gone through Essentials of Teaching and New Teacher Orientation, Growing with Canvas. Training does not stop. It obviously continues for the remainder of the 18 to 36 months. So in the first year alone, candidates are required to attend 10 monthly Saturday seminars. Those are half-day, 8:30 to 12. They do have online coursework because of the rigor and demands of being a first-year teacher and basically going back to school. Candidates only take one online course at a time, except in extenuating circumstances. Those courses depend on the certification field for which they're seeking. They do have certification PD with district specialist. They have to complete 30 hours of diverse field experiences within the program. I divide those up into five different sections of six hours per nine weeks. So they have the opportunity to observe master teachers in their certification area along the way and learn from them. And then, they have coaching cycles with their Georgia TAP supervisor, who is a retired Muskogee educator. I do want to go back to the online coursework and emphasize that perhaps, in a non-traditional program, candidates do not receive direct instruction for teaching of reading. But our Georgia TAP candidates who are pursuing special ed, middle grades, and general elementary education receive three specific courses in how to teach and assess reading.
I think that was kind of my question. Will you repeat that one more time for me?
Our Georgia TAP candidates who are pursuing a special education, middle grades, or general elementary education certificate are required to take three specific courses that regard instruction and assessment of reading.
Because I was thinking as you were talking, because that was one of my concerns, and it's one of the things that Ms. Abdullah mentioned earlier, was just that, you know, I'm a very literate person, and I could probably write real well and do my grammar, but actually teaching it to a child would be a completely... As my children would attest to.
Yes, ma'am.
So that makes me... Because I was kind of wondering how this related back to like early elementary or special education. So thank you.
Those courses are facilitated by Dr. Nakia Roberts, who is our elementary ELA content specialist, and she has a reading endorsement.
So the, of course, special ed teachers teach reading, and then you said the elementary and the lower grades. So how do we, in these cohorts, how do we... How do we section different content areas? How like if I... In a cohort, is there a math cohort, a social studies cohort?
I understand what you're asking. So even though the cohort is made up of candidates seeking multiple certification areas, they do bond that way, and so general instruction is with whole group. But then, they break out into sections if it's specific. So, for example, during Essentials of Teaching, they have a full day just with their designated content specialist from the district to be introduced into questions about the standards, our pacing guides, our resources, et cetera. And then, they also work with our content specialist throughout the program.
Okay. So are... Okay, so is there a time designated? Is there... Now, I'm just wondering about when they get ready to take their exam. You know, the gates. I'm wondering if they're going to have enough time. You know, if you're hidden it here and there, your content area, if you're hidden it here and there, then I'm trying to see if students will, if it's... If they have enough time actually to delve into their actual content, the one that they're going to be tested on.
So Georgia TAP, and this is per the director of the PSC, with the exception of special education, Georgia TAP's emphasis is on just pedagogy. It's the expectation that candidates are coming in with content, which is why they have to pass the content Gaze prior to admission.
Okay. So they pass their content...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Georgia TAP truly is, we support. It's multiple levels. So within Georgia TAP personnel, there's myself. As the program administrator, we currently have three retired Muskogee educators who work part-time. That's Dr. Burl Lovins, Carrie Deal, and Ruthie Hyatt, and Laura Reed, recently retired, serving as our TAP supervisor. And then, each candidate has a candidate support team. So that consists of their supervisor, a school-based teacher support coach or mentor, their school administrator, preferably the one who is doing their evaluation. And then, if their teacher support coach is not certified in the same area that the candidate is seeking, then a content mentor serves on that team as well. And then, we have the We Support a District Specialist. So the teacher quality specialist in PD, the content specialist in curriculum and instruction, our learning innovation specialist with DIS, our program of exceptional students in PES. And we have a very big partnership from the very beginning with human resources in terms of selecting and hiring our candidates. So in the pictures, the top right is Carolyn Mitchell in PES. And the middle left is Roger Jacobson from LIS. The next one is Shawna Hartley, who is a teacher quality specialist for special education. And then, there's Ms. Whittall from Brewer. So this is data to show you the success that we are having over time in our progression. So you'll notice in 1819, which was our very first cohort, that between both cohorts, we admitted 35 candidates. But 11 candidates withdrew from the program prior to earning their certification. So that meant for that year, we only had 69% of retention in the cohort. Well, Georgia TAP focuses on continuous improvement. So we thought about what we could do differently in the admission process. And this is where the interview comes into play. So HR and I developed an interview process. So once candidates have a completed application that's satisfactory, then they are scheduled for a TAP interview slash conversation. And then, only if they pass that screening interview are they recommended to principals to interview for potential hire. So I want you to notice that since we started that process, that our retention rate went from 69% in one year to 89% in the past four. A 20% increase. Whereas, we lost 11 in one year, we've only lost 13 in four. So in terms of the areas that we serve in certification, these are the candidates that we have admitted. Those who have withdrawn, total of 24, 18, 19 through current, completed 71, and currently enrolled, we have 57. So what should stand out, hopefully, is that one of our critical needs areas, we serve... Georgia TAP consists of 61% of special education candidates. And if you take the 49 special ed that we've completed and the 33 that we have enrolled, that is 82 special education teachers. So what's important for me and our Georgia TAP candidates is for every candidate we have, that's a full-time dedicated teacher in a classroom full of students. And they're serving them daily. So the question might be, why would a candidate withdraw from the program during the program? So there's a few common reasons. We've had three candidates withdraw for medical, six for personal reasons, four to go into the private sector, six who have relocated during the program. And if you had to combine the two program renewal and three non-renewals, then that's five for lack of performance. So as Dr. Lewis often says, is it a matter of can't or a matter of won't? And I can assure you that those five candidates had multiple opportunities of coaching and opportunities to change, and that was a matter of won't for those five.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there... Okay.
For the application for the process, do you have certain availability in each area? Or can they apply and then go through the program, and then if the opportunity is available at that point? You know, I was just wondering, say, 30 people wanted to be elementary school teachers, but you didn't have that availability. So is there a limit?
How it works. So we partner with HR, and HR reviews our high-needs areas and informs me of what we need to advertise on each cohort application. Now, they don't give me a set number, but what happens is if we... If a principal recommends a candidate for... Well, let me back up. If we interview the candidate, and we say, yes, a principal can interview them for hire, then HR works with the principals who have openings to find those candidates a position. Now, if a position does not exist, then only the best are taken. If we have 15 apply, and we only have 10 positions, principals are going to recommend the top 10. In this upcoming cohort, though, I can tell you that every candidate that we have already recommended already has a position, usually within 48 hours. So this next graph represents completer retention, meaning that the candidates went through the program, 18 to 36 months, and earned their induction certification and still serve in Muskogee County today. So out of the 52 of the 71... Well, I'm sorry. 52 of the 71 completers, which is 73%, still serve in the district as of this year. So if you take our 57 enrolled, plus our 52 completers who are still serving in the district, then you have 109 school-based employees associated with Georgia TAP. Now, in terms of their reasons why they may have left after they completed the program, five have gone to another Georgia district, and to my knowledge, only one of those is Harris County. Three were due to military. We do have quite a few military who come in our program, military spouses. Five relocated out of state but are still serving students in education in their new location. One decided to go to grad school, one went into the private sector, and then there are four unknown. So while the data is very telling, what really means quite a bit to me is what candidates say directly. And this is my 20th year in education, and I've had a happy file since my first year, which was given to me at New Teacher Orientation and explained to me what it is. So I went through my happy file and chose two candidate notes to share with you. And on that first one from a 1920 cohort candidate, "In regards to Essentials of Teaching is beyond a blessing. I'm not sure how first-year teachers do without the class." We often have teachers who are new to the district, who are not in Georgia TAP, but hear about Essentials of Teaching, ask if they can attend. So that's very telling. And then, the second one, where the person said, "I will forever use what I learned in TAP and always be grateful for your lessons and your support." Now, that person was in 1819, which meant they finished in SY20. This note was sent to me May 3 of this year. And that person is still actively teaching science. So our candidates are successful, not only in the classroom, but several of them who have completed have gone on to do other things in the district. So I just want to spotlight a few of those. You met Sam Brown last spring when he was appointed as AP at Rainey McCullar. Molly Wright recently was awarded the Golden Apple Award in September of this year. Darrell Carter, who started out as a special education candidate, now serves as counselor at Wesley Height. Alexis Jones was Kendrick's High School Teacher of the Year last year, and this year, she is now a counselor at Kendrick. Alyssa Barrow was a first-year Teacher of the Year in SY20. Ametris Davidson, who you also met last spring and serves at Reese Road, was the overall first-year Teacher of the Year last year. And most recently, I learned Paige Garrett is Teacher of the Year at Hardaway High School. And she started Georgia TAP in the 1920 cohort, and that picture you see there was a picture she sent to me her first day at school with students. So from May to October this year, we have gone and under... We have gone under a developmental review with the Professional Standards Commission, which means that we now have been through several cohorts, and they want to see how we're doing. So we received our site review report on October 18, and I am relieved and pleased to say that the site review said all standards are recommended as meant. Candidates are being prepared with appropriate knowledge, skills, and dispositions to have an impact on P through 12 students. There are no areas for improvement. So the site review report officially goes before the commission in December, but we do not anticipate any hookups. No, ma'am. The developmental review is after at least three complete cohorts. After the developmental review, we then go through a full review every seven years. Our last full review is in EPP, was in 2018, when we were in the process of developing Georgia TAP. And so, I anticipate our next one to be in 2025. So looking ahead, we are in the process of finalizing our mid-year cohort for this year. I anticipate there will be 18 to 20 or so candidates. That will be double the size of the biggest mid-year cohort we've ever had. Mid-year cohorts are usually small, and our recruitment strategy of growing within is working. The past couple of years, we have been targeting para-professionals, substitutes, instructional assistants, long-term subs. And out of those that we have already recommended for hire, they are all in-house with the exception of two. And then, the application window for the summer cohort will be open by February. Those are due in May. And then, we start our bigger Essentials of Teaching for the next school year in July. So I'm very proud of the success of our candidates, our supporting staff, and the program's contributions to the district. It is truly a we effort. So thank you to Dr. Lewis, Mr. Seifert, and Dr. Smith for entrusting me to lead Georgia TAP. And what questions may I answer for you?
Thank you. That is really, really good. That's awesome. I'm glad to hear about growing within, because I know so many para-professionals that are... That have finished all of their degrees and just taken the easy way out, being a para. And so, that's great that you all recognize that. I like the thoroughness of the program, and you had an excellent presentation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Mr. Seifert?
Yes, I just want to... I really want to say what an outstanding job Angie Jacobson does to work on this program. And I bring your attention back to that 109 teacher- And bringing your attention back to that hundred and nine teachers that we currently have in classrooms right now. You can't put a number to that, and it's really been fabulous what she's done to, she's up here on Saturdays with our cohorts and working with them, and simply could not have done it without her expertise and her dedication to making this work. This is her baby, and she's really done an excellent job with it. So kudos to her.
Takes great pride in ownership and does a great job with it. And I can tell you, coming up here on Saturdays myself, I often run into her in the mornings, and she and the class are here, and just really appreciate everything that Angie does for leading this effort. Thank you. And now we have another update that I'm really pleased to share, and that's about our virtual program.
Okay. I wasn't finished with my comment on the next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And see, I'm having a senior moment. I almost forget it. If I can, if I can think of my comment. I know, because I told you I'm having a senior moment, and so, but I got it. So I also wanted to point out that this again was an answer to, and I think, Dr. Lewis, this is your thing. This was an answer to our shortage, teacher shortage, years ago. Yeah, one of the answers. So this is a answer to our teacher shortage years ago, when we were having, particularly with, we had, we had a very, very, very big shortage in special education. And so I can remember, well, we discussed this program years ago, and we were relying on the Georgia program, and then Dr. Lewis said, we need to start our own. And so this is, this is an answer to problem solving, and that's what we do here in the district. We solve problems. And now, we're on four point zero two. This is the Lighthouse again.
Well, good evening, and I'd like to concur. I had the privilege of working side by side with Ms. Jacobson, and she is top-notch. You surround yourself with good people. They make you look good, and she's always made me look good, and she makes the district look fabulous as well. I am Michael Barton, and standing next to me is another person that makes me look good, is the wonderful Stacy Martin. And on behalf of Dr. Lewis, Ron Pleasant, and Keith Seifert, we are excited about this opportunity to present a video update on the Lighthouse Virtual Academy. Please, please enjoy. The Lighthouse Virtual Academy was created as a part of Dr. Lewis's ten-year strategic plan that began to come to life in the fall of twenty-twenty-one. Hounded on the principles of the Muskogee County School District's mission statement to inspire and equip all students to achieve unlimited potential, the Board of Education approved the steps taken to open MCSD's newest educational offering, the Lighthouse Virtual Academy, home of the Navigators. After a very successful opening on August eighth, twenty-twenty-two, the Muskogee County School District's Lighthouse Virtual Academy's inaugural year is off to a remarkable start. Partnering with Proximity Learning, LVA currently serves ninth and tenth grade students in an engaging and personalized full-time virtual educational environment. The goal is to meet students where they are academically, emotionally, and socially.
Thank you, Lighthouse Virtual Academy, for this wonderful opportunity for Van.
LVA's student course offerings are a hybrid combination of both synchronous and asynchronous models. Our hybrid class models adapt to student learning styles and offers our students more scheduling flexibility.
Lighthouse is a very great learning environment. It keeps you from all distractions, and it really helps you understand everything that you're being taught.
Lighthouse Academy has been a very good school to me. It has offered me multiple different learning styles.
LVA's extensive class offerings range from honors and general studies to foreign languages to a variety of career, technical, and agricultural education courses, and the best is yet to come.
I want to say how grateful I am for the opportunity to work with this school and how wonderfully these students have been doing. I've been impressed with their creativity and the way they come together to support each other within the classroom. They are truly kind and hardworking, and I can't wait to see what they do next.
Expectations are set high for LVA students. Each student is equipped with a personal learning device, headphones, a variety of online instructional applications, and if needed, a personal hotspot. Students are expected to take personal responsibility and partner with their teacher to help navigate their success.
Out of all of my virtual schools, Lighthouse is the most organized and prepared. From student placement, curriculum, teacher training, student support, it truly is a partnership when working with Lighthouse.
My name is India Morning. My experience with Lighthouse Academy has been great.
The Lighthouse Virtual Academy believes that social interaction and engagement are essential to online learning. Our students participate in various extracurricular activities and sports at their designated homeschool. Some of these activities include FBLA, DECA, music, marching band, basketball, swimming, and track and field. The Lighthouse Virtual Academy's future is bright. For the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, LVA will be adding grades eighth and eleventh, followed by seventh and twelfth grade for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. We will expand our course curriculum opportunities to include AP, dual enrollment, and additional academic electives. As we grow, it is our goal to transition and hire MCSD teachers with the online teacher endorsement as our primary faculty. Additionally, we look forward to the opportunity to attract homeschool, private school, and out-of-district students into the Lighthouse Virtual Academy franchise. Please join us for our virtual open house on November seventeenth at six PM. A link is on our website at lighthousevirtual.org, or come in person on November twenty-ninth at six PM in the auditorium at the Columbus Public Library.
Thank you, MCSD.
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 Awesome.
All right. Do we have any questions?
Of course. I want to say good. That's, that's great that we are getting to this point. I think the initial conversation was about franchising and making sure that we can be the beacon for out-of-district students, in particular, maybe some AP courses that's not available in a smaller county. And I'm really proud of the fact that they actually have a mascot, the Navigators. I thought that was quite clever, and I just want to say, good job. Been a process, and I'm glad that we're here. Thank you.
I have one question. The, in terms of the academic level of the students. The academic level of the students, now, are these not required? Are most of these kids on grade level and above?
Yes, ma'am. They are. That is one of the requirements. That's one of the criteria to get into the school.
Okay, that's what I thought, because I was trying to figure out.
Absolutely. We look at the star reading and we look at star math.
Right.
When we're doing that, we also look, last year, because we had the SAT eight-nine, we also looked at the SAT eight-nine, and I think there was one other, we looked at their ACHIEVE and their IXL levels as well.
That's good. I was just trying to make sure, because I know it would be difficult for.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Are there any more questions?
So currently, how many students do we have enrolled?
We have sixty-one enrolled this year, and they're doing great.
Are we developing a criteria that will look at more than just the SAT score? Because it doesn't mean, a scoring on a standardized test like ACT, SAT, doesn't mean you're not capable of being successful in a virtual environment.
Yes, ma'am. We also look at, we look at their grades, what they were doing in school the previous year. And as we're taking in applications now, we're looking at what their grades are, and we also look at teacher recommendations.
And that also goes in the opposite direction. They may meet, they may have met all these criterias and not be successful with the virtual learning environment.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one of those people in my house.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. But we do look at, we do try to look at criteria that would be the most successful, and that's what we're going for to, as we're moving.
So what was the hybrid? And I saw something that said hybrid in there, and.
Hybrid.
Hybrid, yeah. And what I'm thinking, okay, so let's say, let's go to business, Green's question about, let's say there's a kid that's underperforming, and so what do we do for him? Before, maybe he has to have a different placement. So what do we do for him in order to make him more adaptable to the?
We have Winning on Wednesdays. Our Winning on Wednesdays, that's, it's Winning on Wednesdays. It's our program that we, it's our enrichment or our remediation day. And if a student's missing a grade, if they're missing an assignment, if they're not passing, then they're required to come to Winning on Wednesdays and meet with teachers. If they get to that point that they have to be on an academic contract, then we do an academic contract. And then they meet with me once a week as well.
And the grades are on that campus thing so the parents can see?
Yes, ma'am.
The parents can see the grades.
Yeah, the grades are available, and it's, and being in the virtual environment, we have a close contact with all the parents, and believe it or not, it's kind of easier to get ahold of a parent, because we can get them right there on a Zoom call, right there on their phone, right there, wherever they're at. We can get them on and say, hey, you know, little Johnny here needs some little help. We need you to make sure that they're getting up on time, getting to class. With the hybrid model being asynchronous and synchronous, there is an opportunity for both teacher-led instruction and some autonomy for students to do some work on their own as well, and getting the enrichment on Winning Wednesdays as well, so.
How many teachers do you actually have on campus when they come on Winning Wednesdays? And have you seen the, I guess, the reaction of the teachers? Has it been positive compared to some of them with the COVID kind of, you know?
All our teachers are virtual, and they're all through proximity this year. We have nine teachers, and they're from all over the world. I have our health teacher, he's in, where's he? The Philippines.
So when they come on Wednesdays, there's, is it just you and the children?
No, no, no. They meet with their teachers on Wednesdays. They have certain times.
Just in a room virtually?
But it's virtually. Everything's, everything is virtual.
If they came on the campus. And then for next year, what do you see the enrollment looking like for next year?
My goal is to double what we have this year.
Okay. By adding or in those grades too, or you're opening enrollment for those?
We're opening, we're going to be eighth through, we're hopefully having eighth through twelfth grade, and our goal is to double what we have this year.
When next year, we're adding eighth grade and eleventh grade.
And then hopefully, hopefully the grade that you already have, that one will expand as well.
Yes, we'll keep our kids now and then add to that. Absolutely.
How are they hired, the teachers? Are they going through our regular HR process?
Right now, we're working with Proximity Learning. It's an outside contracting company that hires teachers. But one of the things that, we have a close relationship, as you, as you saw the gentleman speaking, Mr. Ken Lester.
Ken Lester.
Yeah. We get to actually work with them to, I don't want to say handpick, but we work very closely with them about choosing the right teacher for the right class.
So anybody?
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
How long are the literacy courses? How long are they?
Our classes last for an hour. They're sixty minutes when, for each period.
Okay. I just thought about this, in terms of the personalizing learning. If we had a kid that excels in, let's say, every academic subject, or maybe even math, what do we do? I mean, are we, is there opportunity for the kid to move on?
We have honors classes, and our teachers are working with those students. They're engaging them, they are pushing them, and they're creating projects for them so that they are not bored, they're staying engaged, and they're learning.
Okay. I was just wondering, I had a nephew who actually loved COVID, because he said that he could just go on and do his work. He didn't have to wait on the teacher, you know? He could, and I was just wondering, but then after he did it, he just stopped. He was through. And so, you know, and nothing is wrong with that, but I was just thinking that we need to have some kind of opportunity for him to do something else, and if we do have projects.
Yes, ma'am, and our students are right now in ninth and tenth grade, so our curriculum will continue to expand into the AP and dual enrollment. So that's one of the things that we want to make sure that we are building those programs to excel our students.
How, how, how is, how are you doing the extracurricular activities? How, what is that process like? If they're participating with a school, how is that determined?
They, they work with their home zone schools, and so we, you know, they'll ask, they'll check with us, and we keep in contact with the home zone schools so that we know when the different tryouts are and things like that, so that we let them know. And we do have kids who are in the marching band, who are on track and field, who are playing basketball. So they're, they're being involved in their home zone schools.
Just to let you know, I've had probably well over a dozen inquiries from other districts and from homeschool students, even some private school students who are looking at this as an option. They love the idea, and especially for some of our students who have some health issues. We actually have one district, one student from another district, we don't, we don't offer that grade level yet, but they were calling to inquire about it simply because they have an autoimmune deficiency that would not allow them to go to the regular school. But this is something they're really intrigued by. It's not just a canned curriculum, which is what you would see in a lot of online environments. This is actually taught by teachers, and hopefully down, well, not hopefully down the road, it will include just our teachers specifically. But we will always have this option to include for the students that might need advancement or acceleration, the opportunity to contract with either one of our teachers, or possibly even a proximity as need, to address the needs of students individually.
At one time, when we first started talking about this idea, we had talked about at some point, and I know it's still early, we don't have all the grades and everything, but I just wanted to ask, are we still thinking about being able to expand it outside of Muskogee County for a fee? Okay.
I was referring to, they came from another district outside. Actually, they're in a county below us, a couple of counties below us that have this situation. So yes, they would just, the agreement would be an MOU where they would pay us the equivalent of the FTE for that period to defray the cost for us.
For people who may be interested in applying with Proximity, is there a link on our website or somewhere?
Good question.
Our application is in the same program as the magnet applications are. So as they're applying, I'm seeing kids who are applying to the different magnets, and they're still applying to Lighthouse, so they are seeing it, and they're able to apply that way.
Okay, and I mean, teachers.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're in the same window. So we started on October the 26th and it will go through January the 20th.
All right. That's a great answer, but the question was actually, I'm glad you brought that up. But the question was actually, people who are interested in working for proximity, how are those applications? Do we have a link on our website somewhere or? But that, I'm glad you did answer that question, so now we know.
I thought she said it was contracted.
I know, but if they want it. Which one is that? C two?
I did.
Okay.
The original protocol for this was, we're going to hire proximity, utilize their services for the first year. And then start to gravitate towards identifying Muskogee County School District teachers and advertising for those teachers to be able to teach into the program the next year. And then hopefully by 2024, 25, we would have the majority of the teachers applying for, or teaching in the program.
When they get online certification?
Yeah, they would need to get their online endorsement.
Yeah, we were very cognitive about making sure that the schools will be taken care of. Heard Ms. Jacobson's presentation about GTAP program. There is a sort of a teacher shortage out there. So we wanted to make sure that we were not robbing Peter to pay Paul. And right now, we have a great partnership with proximity. Some of the experts in the virtual world, learning worlds are saying that we are doing this the right way. We have a motto that we are going slow to be great and we're building grade by grade by grade to get us through seven through 12 by 24, 25. And at that point, that's the same thing. We kind of do a hybrid model with the hiring process. So we'll be hiring some Muskogee County school teachers, maybe 25% and then 50%, and then 75% up till we get maybe to 100%. But we'll be still utilizing proximity to help cover gaps as well.
Comes to attracting and hiring teachers that may not be in Muskogee County for the future under our own program. How will we market that? How will we reach out to that teacher in the Philippines or, you know, somewhere that would? It seems like that would be a challenge. Do we have avenues in which to? Maybe a simplistic question, but I'm just curious.
There are virtual learning sites for teachers to go on. We'll be partnering closely with our HR department and identifying those type of candidates. We're still working out details of the rules, I guess, of processes of how we will hire the teachers that may not live in our district. Are we going to, you know, let them teach virtually and things of that nature? So there's still some processes that we have to work out. But I can tell you that we have a great resource here in that our military families, who oftentimes have spouses who teach in our system and then get redeployed elsewhere. They can work in this capacity with us. Yeah.
Germany, the military, this is so, just, I mean, so old school for military members who have been doing distance learning. You know, I did a Troy or something like that class. My teacher was in Munich. You know, it's so, this is cool.
That's the network we're hoping to be able to tap into.
To tap into.
And nothing is as good as word of mouth, so as they become part of this process and deployed around the world, wherever they might go, tell friends and we'll certainly be able to use our Garrison Commander to help us share some of this information out.
I mean, even, even the DODIA, the Department of Defense Education, I mean, DODIA would have, this is innovative. Thank you.
Now, we currently have proximity teachers.
Yes.
We already have them, not with the virtual school, but we have teachers all over right now.
But again, I just want to recognize this team as well as Mr. Cypher, Mr. Pleasant, all of the team they represent, who really worked tirelessly throughout the beginning of the brainstorming, all the way through the summer and actual implementation. And Ms. Martin just does a tremendous job of leading this. And the kids, I got a chance to, on the orientation, be part of the orientation with them, and that was a lot of fun. Getting to know all the kids and some of the activities they're involved with, but they are really excited and the families are very appreciative.
Ms. Jacobson, I hope you were listening. I heard the, some of the people that didn't make it through the program were military, that maybe we can add some kind of component where we can save that investment and gear that TAP program towards preparing them for online teaching, online certification.
We're working very closely with the department or Division of Teaching and Learning, Tim Smith area, Mr. Cypher's area. I know they are offering opportunities for Muskogee County School District teachers to get the online teacher certification.
Okay, are there any more questions? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes the education committee.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Next, we have personnel, Ms. Jackson.
Zero one is the personnel report. There is two attachments. Are there any questions?
Openings and stuff.
If you're looking for totals, we actually have a total number of vacancies of four hundred.
Can you come a little closer?
We have a total number of vacancies of 438. The numbers have been dropping in the regions. In central, we have 36. In west, we have 12. And in east, we have 48 and a half. So clearly, we're the majority of our vacancies are in the operations and facilities area.
Okay, this is total, how many teacher vacancies do we have?
Teacher vacancies, we have a total of 16 special education teachers, 27 special education paras, general ed teachers, 29.5, and general ed paras, 24.
And that was a total of, I mean?
So that comes to a total of?
Sixteen, twenty, twenty-six.
Sixteen, twenty-seven.
Twenty-four, six, eight, nine, ninety-six.
Sixty-seven. And so it's about, about 90 or just over 90. Okay.
It's important to note too, that we do, that's where the proximity teachers come in, that we were talking about referencing earlier, there are certified teachers as well as long-term substitutes, things of that nature. So we're not, these are not 92 classrooms that are vacant every day. Just want to make sure we point that out.
And we have, we have a lot of, do we have a lot of long-term substitutes who are, who were teachers? You know, I don't need for you to look that up, but I'm just thinking that we do. We have a lot of teachers that are substitutes, so we get some advantage in there when we have real, not real teachers, but we'll have certified teachers in the classroom. Of course, we still have a lot of vacancies, but still, we're doing the best we can like everybody else in the nation.
We're actually working through several creative ways to fill those positions. You already heard about proximity learning, substitute teachers, looking at a company that could potentially help us with that. They already help us with proximity learning, so it makes sense to look at them for substitute teaching. We do a lot of job fairs in places where maybe we've never done them before, looking at virtual job fairs. So there's a, we're tapping into a lot of things that maybe we haven't tried before in hopes of seeing how it turns out. The only way we can do is try.
Okay, and we tapping into TAP too.
I think,
you go on.
I think it would be helpful if maybe we added to our monthly report this synopsis of our teacher and special ed shortages. Just maybe a three run, the three-month running total so we can see any trends, drops, you know, just a summary, just what you read out. So because you've read this out to us now for, I think, the last three months. I haven't taken notes. You know, I've heard it and tried to calculate my mind, but it'd be helpful just to have it here in our reports that we can look at, then you don't have to add it up at the, you know, at the, they're sitting there. And we can ask relevant questions according to maybe a three-month trend.
Great suggestion.
Great suggestion. And I do have access to every single board meeting, have the details for those. So we can, I can make sure to look. I know you only want to see that three-month summary, so you'll get that.
Well, let me, let me just say this. Let me just, let me just say this. You provide us the information, details and the summary. And then we'll individually choose which one we want to read. How about that?
Fair enough.
And with our subs, how many are long-term subs?
I'll have to look that up because I don't know how many.
For us? And Mr. Anderson, with our bus drivers, how are we doing?
Yes, I do have that. So bus driving, bus drivers for general ed, there's 34 vacancies. For sub bus drivers, there's 13. And for the bus monitors, did you want bus monitors?
Yes, yes.
Bus monitors, 49. And I think I left off one. Special ed, there's five.
That's lower than I was saying.
Right.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's. Good job Travis.
That's the trend that we're.
And we are still taking applications.
So how? At every opportunity.
How is that, that everyone is a recruiter, 500 bonus thing doing? Is it helpful? Has it been helpful?
Are we, are we, is that working at all?
Or did we just, or are we just getting lucky?
They were on a roll for a minute, then what happened?
Finance?
Is that Janice?
Yeah, we'd have to look it up.
Okay.
So if you have to look it up, it must not be significant. Are there any more questions? That and personnel report.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Policy committee, Ms. Tilley. Oh, I need to turn you now.
Yes, I'm going to talk about 6.01, the legislative priorities. The superintendent of education recommends that the board take action on the 2023 legislative priorities that will be presented to the local legislative delegation prior to the General Assembly. It's attached. Would y'all like for me to read the, do you want me to read the lines? No, no, I don't know. Okay, well, it is attached. If you would like to read it.
Bottom lines, I took last year's priorities, struck the ones that no longer were relevant, and added the new ones that came from GSBA, GSSA and GALE. And you had those in advance and if you had a chance to read through them and that's what we'll.
So we'll take questions about anything you want to add or changes or, and for the public, this is public.
It's an interesting document if you want, yeah.
Yeah, I was just.
It does have a lot of interesting information here.
Reminds me a little bit of children asking parents, like, if we just keep asking each year, maybe one day they'll answer.
Well, we've had a few of them actually come to fruition.
Yeah, then we'll take off the ones that are successful and just keep asking.
That's right.
Point of sale, line item, paragraph. I think it's respective, not irrespective.
Oh, I didn't see it.
But it, I mean, it's a good document.
I feel good about it. The three.
It's growing.
Just so everyone knows, the three, the three that we added from GSBA that are from GSSA, just the three new ones relate to funding school transportation. It was cut back in 2008, restoring that. Yeah, the graph is pretty interesting in itself. Also adding for, providing for more counselors in light of some of the situation. This has been a need for a long time, long before the pandemic. The caseload is way too high, so that was in there. And I can't remember the third one right offhand.
And the one about adding the safety line item so that that's.
Oh, the safety, yes, for a safety line item in the state budget so we can have guaranteed funds coming annually to deal with safety measures, security measures.
And 6.02, it is approve the new board policy IKBC. Material harmful to minor complaint resolution process as dictated by the board policy. BDC policy adoption, this policy will be carried over to the December meeting for final adoption. Does anybody have any questions about that?
This, the first time it's being presented, it'll sit on the table for 30 days and you'll act on it in December. This is the first time.
It was on Friday.
Hit your mic.
Yeah.
On Monday then, because I can't read fast. So I didn't, I don't know why. I guess I just didn't see this. I thought I scrolled down.
You're asking, was it on there when the agenda was released?
Yeah, Nikki said it was.
Okay.
She said it was. I just didn't see it. I'll have to read.
And you can read slowly because it won't be approved until December, if you should.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just need to see what's so harmful. Okay.
But this is also in response to legislation. You may recall, this is also in response to that requires us to have something in place by January. However, we already had a process in place already. This just meets those verbiage, if you will.
Yeah, because that's what I was going to say. There's, this is a completely new policy, right? And do we pretty much take the wording from GSBA?
This, we had. We had a complaint resolution process previously that was pretty much the same thing. It's just, we just used their verbiage to incorporate this. But we always had a process if there was a concern about materials, about how it can be reviewed and processed. Right, the whole committee, everything, right. We've always had that. Not all districts did.
But even when GSBA recommends a language, we still don't.
What was that?
I was just, I think I heard somebody say it's pretty much what we have to use because GSBA recommended. You know, it's always still a recommendation. And it is up to us to come up with our policy, whether we use that one or we come up with our own.
And that came out of the General Assembly.
Now, this, this didn't, this didn't, yeah, even if it did, what came out is that we had to have a policy. So we don't have to have this. We can have our own policy. Now, it's easier if they recommend some language. But if we have language, if we have what was recommended, and this is what GSBA probably.
Not GSBA, that came out of the legislature.
This is Senate Bill 226.
Senate bill, that's right.
Okay, came out, I know it came out of the Senate bill, but the Senate bill didn't say, here, this is what you have to have. Senate bill said that you have to have a language for.
No, no, we're talking about two different things. You're right, yes. But I was just trying to make sure that we understood.
Okay, well, I knew that. I knew, I knew that it came from, but I knew that it didn't have to, we don't have to use this language. We have.
But that language, you're right.
It's always the responsibility of the Muskogee County School Board to do their own language, whatever language, even if they use this, huh?
It's some of, that harmful to students is a mandated language, because I remember seeing it in the, in the bill.
The language is mandated, but you don't have to use these words. You don't have to use, you have to use a language that means harmful to students, but you do not have to use this. You have to use what the legislature recommend harmful language. But you don't have to use this word for, you don't have to dictate, it will not dictate a language for you to use. You just have to have the language. So in other words, we can move on. I want to read this. All right.
I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Dr. Slid, Discipline Committee.
Discipline Committee has nothing to submit at this time.
Thank you, sir. Policy, I'm sorry, Property Committee is next. 8.01, is there a surplus of library books coming from our local library? Are there any questions? Okay, hold on. None. All right, item 8.02, surplus technology. That's going to be desktop laptops. This is asking us for a declaration to approve the sale. Same thing on the, on the library books, the sale of the out of adoption. And then transportation is eight point zero three, it's asking us to approve declaration, um, of surplus and sale of used buses in our transportation department.
Almost twenty-year-old buses.
Twenty-year-old buses. Eight point zero four is our museum report. Do y'all want, have you all had a chance to, let's see, let's, what can I highlight? I wasn't prepared, I'm sorry. Uh, let's see, October was a memorable month. It, as, as the exhibitions and programs concluded, um, they had twelve, one thousand two hundred sixty-nine people through the month of October visiting art at the museum, they offered a week of tours led by educators and curators, culminating the fall festival that was held October the fifteenth. The museum also celebrated the start of renovations with the groundbreaking ceremony on October the twenty-eighth. Um, the construction crew has begun the work on the project, and they've relocated next door to one-three-two-seven Wenton Road, where they will have all their children activities and shop, and then they will offer other programs over the coming months. So the library is not, I mean, the museum is not closed, it's relocated to one-three-two-seven Wenton Road during this expansion project. Next is the library report. The Chattahoochee Valley Library wants to highlight the great application that they have, a new app or an app, putting the library at your fingertips, it has the catalog, access to reading suggestions, and can store your library card. All programs at all branches are available with a couple of taps. The library report includes that the Affleck Children Department had over a hundred and fifty children visit the library during field trips. And then some tangible outcomes listed for MCSDT SOL classes at military are over fifty library cards have been secured from parents. Several introduced to bilingual books and used their cards to check them out. And then, of course, they took a group picture. For storytime, there was a visit, an early head start, a teacher asked children's outreach staff if there were fall books available. She was thrilled to find out that children's outreach would deliver a simple steps fall storytime kit with five books, a squirrel puppet, and related early learning ideas, um, to her classroom. And that is the end of our property committee. Construction committee, Mr. Cantrell, or do you have a presentation, Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson has a presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You see how I did that, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. So for the construction status report. Thank you so very much, so as you know, we do this every odd month, but we skipped September, so you haven't seen slides from us in some time. We're excited about what we've been able to do, of course, you know, we opened our brand-new system-wide stadium, yes.
I, I have something to say about the stadium. Is it okay? So, uh, this is a point of personal privilege. I was at the ballgames last couple of weeks, and, uh, I, I hope every single citizen in Muskogee County gets a chance to go to this stadium because it is unbelievable.
Nectarifying.
I was blown away, yes, but I got to tell two real quick stories. One was in the, one of the playoff games, the opposing team was out on the field practicing before the evening game, and it was overheard, the, um, the coach from the opposing team looked at his, his players on the field and said, "See, this is what I told you, you make it to the playoffs and you get to play in a stadium like this." And then when, when we were getting out of the car, there was a, a, a couple that was getting out of the car next to us, and the gentleman, the fa, the family was from the opposing team, the week, this was the week before, and he got out of the car and he turned, and he looked at the stadium and he just went, "Oh, my." So there.
Well, there's nothing more needs to be said about that.
No, go ahead and tell the rest of the community.
So as you know, we did lots of projects over the summer with our athletic fields, so here you see Baker with their brand-new field, some bleachers and a new scoreboard, we're excited about what we've been able to do with the middle schools. You also know during the summertime, we updated and provided some upgrades to some of our elementary schools. So Brewer's a wonderful thing, what new floors and paint can do, and they have a brand-new gym floor as well. Davis, they have a security vest field, all of our elementary schools that we did our projects on have security vest fields with exception of Key. That's already, that's the only one that's still outstanding, but they have security vest field as well as floors and paint, and then new floors in their cafeteria. And these projects were identified by the principal, the principal decided what was best for their school, and we worked with them to do those projects. East Columbus with their new athletic fields and scoreboard. We also did some projects in some of our middle school gyms, so here you see Eddie with new bleachers in the gym and a new scoreboard.
They look so much more comfortable.
It is a little more comfortable, so go out and enjoy a good basketball game. You know, we have lots of things happening at Jordan, so if you haven't been out to Jordan, you probably wouldn't recognize it, their gym is phenomenal. We're excited to see what they're going to be able to do in that gym. The new media center is a reflection of what a media center should be, so we're really excited about the ability for the students to use that new media center. We also wanted to let you know that once we finish all the projects at Jordan, you know, lots of projects that you've seen over the past two years happen at Jordan, and once we're done, which will be really soon, we're going to have an open house for the entire community to come in and see what we've done at Jordan, and to experience what their East Watch dollars have done there. Key. Key Elementary School has new carpet in their media center and the new flooring throughout their hallways, and they are the last school to receive the security vest field, which will happen before the end of this summer, this winter. Lonnie Jackson, we redid their restroom floors. If you've ever been out to Lonnie Jackson, their walkers have a fairly steep hill to traverse, and so we now have a safer path for them to go home in the evenings and come in the mornings, and they too have a brand-new security vest field. If you've driven past Matthews, you'll see that we have walls up and a roof coming really soon, so we're excited about that four-classroom addition at Matthews to give that school some much-needed space, and that project will be done before the end of this winter, so early twenty-twenty-three. We did some upgrades at Richards Middle School Gym, look at those floors. We are excited about what they're going to be able to do in that gym. Rothschild's Middle School, they received their security vest field upgrades in their, uh, main office, as well as something very simple but makes a huge impact, to paint those door trims throughout the whole building, so it makes a huge difference and just brightens the space up. We also updated their athletic fields and made them ADA accessible. The new elementary school, if you go by, this is what you're going to see. And you'll probably say, we broke ground in August, why aren't we seeing more? We know this is a challenging site, and so they are doing lots of work to deal with that challenging soil and to deal with the fact that it's lots of water and soil, and so all of that work is happening. So even though there's a lot of work that has taken place, and we're actually ahead of schedule, it doesn't look like it if you drive by, but please know that the construction crew is ahead of schedule. They are working diligently to do what needs to be done on a very challenging site so we can have a beautiful school.
The deers know, because they're everywhere.
We have lots of additional projects which are outlined here for you, as well as in the detailed monthly status report for construction. And this month you have Octobers and Novembers because we overlooked Octobers last month, sorry about that. We, again, everything, nothing can happen without our East Watch dollars, so we thank the community for your support and for continuing to support the work of the construction department as we support the work of students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Madam Chair, that's all from construction.
Thank you, sir.
I have, I would like to report that I have read that policy. And by definition of what harmful language is, and examples that they are giving, what they gave, and the examples were harmful things. So, um, I, uh, and the steps that they used, it's, it's a very, uh, so far, it's a good policy.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Now on to our finance committee, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, finance committee, uh, ten point zero one, purchase exception. A and B is for, um, your videotapes, textbooks, films, reference material of three items, are there any questions on those three? Moving to ten point zero two, purchase exception C, this is, uh, for maintenance service from the original vendor. There's one item from Infinite Campus for student information system license, any questions? Six, or ten point zero three, purchase exception E, additional purchases, you have one, it would stay on here. You have one item from Malone's Office Equipment, uh, under bids and quotations, any questions? Ten point zero four, purchase exception F, invitation to bid. Uh, you have two items, uh, one from Malone's, one from Miracle Recreation Equipment for playground equipment, any questions? Ten point zero five, purchase exception G for professional services. Sorry, it keeps going away. You have three items, United Way, Power School Group, and KVDM, which is Sylvan, any questions on those?
So this is the money that relates to the presentation we saw earlier from United Way.
Yep.
Do we have any kind of breakdown as the two sixty-five, is that what, I mean, are we paying for the coordinators?
Yeah, all the personnel and supplies and things of that nature.
I'd be interested to see the further breakdown, but thank you. Now, I mean, I feel like this is a very good use of the SR fund, especially in light of all that is coming.
Okay, that takes us to ten point zero six, your sole source and volatile purchases, you have your petroleum purchase for the month. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to ten point zero seven, this is competitively bid projects, you have one item for band uniforms. Any questions on that? And then ten point zero eight is your monthly purchase order increases, there's one item for voice-over internet protocol.
Do we do band uniforms?
It's a rotation, uh.
They are on a rotation?
It's a rotation basis.
Okay.
Bid.
So, as they rotate, do the schools have to pay a certain amount? Okay, and, and what is that amount? What percentage, oh, they pay half on the, okay.
Best to be allowed twenty-five thousand, how far that goes, but for some it's.
Yeah, I, I knew they allowed Carver twenty-five. I was just checking, I knew they allowed Carver twenty-five thousand.
I will just state, when I was a high school band director, I had to raise money, all of it, every dime of it, myself.
Still have to raise more than, more than twenty-five thousand, so.
I said all of it.
Of course, they want to thank you for the twenty-five, but they still have a long way to go.
Really, I'm glad you're bringing that up, that, um, the schools still have to.
They've got skin to gain.
Or parents still have to raise money in addition to what the school district budget's for. And that's for all of the, not just band uniforms.
Primarily band uniforms, we're trying to work on other things too, as far as, of course, we do buy the, the robes, I believe, if I'm mistaken, but anyway. But the band is the highest, high yield.
Does that mean you have an answer, Ms. Butler? Okay.
Um, on the United Way, on page eight of the United Way proposal, um, that is attached to the board agenda, has the breakdown.
Okay.
Page eight?
Yes, of the proposal attachment.
That takes us to ten point zero nine for additional allocation budgets, you have three items from Division of Teaching and Learning, Facilities and Operations, and teach, uh, two from Teaching and Learning, I apologize, and one of those is your proximity learning. Any questions on those? Uh, ten point ten, my favorite, is our donations, I was a little blown away this month. Uh, the total donations in cash and in kind, no, just cash, is fifty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That is dozens of schools' programs, from math to race team, to music program, to our alternative program, to every sport, as well as support for, um, uh, programs like DECA and drafting and exceptional students, and across the board, just an amazing amount of generosity in this community for our public education system, and we appreciate it. And the final item under finance committee is ten point eleven, which is your monthly financial statements, are there any questions on those? Seeing none, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Lewis, did you want to update us on anything?
Are you ready for my update? Okay, well, first of all, just want, want to remind everyone that, uh, there is a groundbreaking tomorrow. Uh, the library has a groundbreaking tomorrow for the south, uh, renovation that's being done. South branch. And then, that's at four-thirty? Four-thirty? Yeah. Weather permitting and all the, wind blows out of the east, all conditions right? Uh, also, congratulations to the Northside High School, uh, softball, uh, team, state champions.
Yes.
Great job.
Outstanding.
Also, uh, congratulations to Carver, Northside, Spencer, and Shaw, who made it, uh, to the first round of playoffs and continuing in that, uh, journey, we have Carver and Northside, Northside will be at home. I believe it's at seven, or is it seven-thirty, do we know which, uh, seven-thirty? Seven-thirty at, um, Canet Stadium on Friday. And then Carver travels to Harlem for their game.
To where?
Harlem, that's over near Augusta.
Near Augusta.
Okay. Um, also want to congratulate the board and thank our staff. Um, we submitted an application that'll be recognized in, uh, at the winter conference for GSBA, but we were notified, uh, late last week that our district was selected, uh, as one of the recipients of the Leading Edge Award for innovative practices, uh, specifically, um, regarding our personalized learning effort, and, uh, that is going to be recognized again at the winter conference at GSBA, and I'm really proud of the efforts that being made in the personalized learning, um, endeavor. And then, um, wanted to take a moment to, once again, some of our more challenged schools are still struggling with attendance, getting students to school, uh, getting them to school on time. Uh, it is imperative for us to all work together to get the children here, but no matter how good our teachers are, they can't make an empty chair learn. So I just ask everyone who can to please get your children to school on time, help us any way you possibly can, it is imperative they get there. And we're trying to do everything we can in our power, we realize that transportation is still a challenge, and we're, we're working on that, as you've heard, with the increased number of drivers. But, uh, we have a number of students who are walking or riding bikes to school and are still arriving late or not coming at all. And I understand inclement weather and all that, but again, school has got to be an imperative, especially in light of what we're dealing with to try and recover from the pandemic.
I, I would just suggest that we develop a message to share with our media partners so that they can incorporate that on all of their airtime and, and all of their shows.
We can certainly do that. And then finally, I think we all know that upcoming next week is Thanksgiving, and as I try to always remind everyone, it's not just simply an, uh, a holiday, but it really is a condition of the heart. We should all be very grateful and thankful for living in this country and for all of our many blessings, and, uh, I just hope everyone has a very safe and enjoyable holiday break, but it's important, again, uh, we have a lot of children when they're out in school, uh, they're out in the streets, so everyone slow down, be cautious, and be, uh, have everybody return safely from the Thanksgiving holiday break.
Now, we're going to also recognize Dr. Sly, uh, his award as our educational champion.
And then tomorrow we have a, um, just a quick reminder, our, our board's been invited, we have some teachers participating in a, um, Muskogee County School District Teacher Think Tank, some of our teachers have been invited to be a part participating in that, and the board, if you're available, can come by and.
Would you send out information about the groundbreaking? I do not have any.
All right.
We can send it again, it's on our website.
All right, we'll send it out again.
To this, thank Mrs. Thomas for our cheat sheet right here.
Well, this is just something, this is something. Well, this is just something, this is something I do annually, just some updates on my tenure plan. It's the plan, the progress. And it's one, I've been asked to speak at the City Council tomorrow, so I just went ahead. So you can have these and see, these are all things we've announced previously, but it's all kind of captured in one document.
I had given it to you, Mrs. Thomas. I, thank you, thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Meeting next Monday. We will meet on the 28th, so we will see y'all two weeks from now.
Yeah, do we have it?
Not tomorrow.
It's still on, like, in Oliver.
Thank you for leaving.
We'll wave goodbye. Good night. Thank you so much.